...now seven P M and time for the board to state on the council meeting here in 100 State Street. The way this council... And, uh, number one is the call for...
Uh, roll call shows all councilors present except Jim Van de Bogart.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with every team justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Great night to have a meeting, huh? Well, it is absolutely my pleasure to have Bruce standing here in back of me, uh, more than what you could possibly know. However, right now, I want to introduce, um, Jim Hessling. Jim, if you'd come down. Jim is the Director of Public Works for the city of Cottage Grove in Wisconsin. He's also on the Executive Committee of the American Public Works Association, the Wis- in the Wisconsin chapter. So I'm gonna let Jim, um, present the award to Bruce, um, and go from there.
Good evening, council members. On behalf of the Wisconsin chapter, we are pl- um, we are pleased to present Bruce with the, um, American Public Works Professional Manager of the Year Award under the category of Public Works Emergency Management for 2012. Um, Bruce has been doing a lot of things for the city and for our program. As Manager of Streets, Snow Forestry and Traffic Control, Bruce has done an excellent job of integrating emergency management into all aspects of his role as operation supervisor. Above and beyond his day-to-day activities in Boyd, Bruce has been a leader throughout the state on emergency management issues, one of which includes developing a statewide mutual aid agreement for the state of Wisconsin. Bruce has not only assisted our state to be better prepared to respond to emergencies, but he has taken the front line as a first responder for hazardous spills and has participated in multi-agency incident command centers. We are honored to have Bruce as part of our chapter. Bruce is also a member of the Southwestern Wisconsin Incident Management Team and participated in the Emergency Operations Center in 2011 at the Wisconsin State Capitol during strikes against Belton Walker. Bruce also participated in the multidisciplinary incident command structure with the United States Secret Service agent when John Kerry visited Boyd during his run for presidency. Bruce has also represented the American Public Works Association on several emergency services sector committees for the Department of Homeland Security. And, uh, I would like to present Bruce with this award. Uh, it's the, um, from APWA, it's the American Public Works Association, um, National Professional Manager of the Year Award for the public works, the management category. And, uh, just so you know, Boyd is well representative at our chapter, at the national level. Uh, there's a lot of articles on the city of Boyd, the public works, and how they are able to consult facts of public works department. Well, thank you. Um, it's quite an honor to get to receive this award. Kind of overwhelming, actually. Um, it would not be the, for the council, the city manager, and the other departments letting me join in on these, uh, different, uh, committees so we can be more prepared, uh, this wouldn't happen. This was, uh, it's a great honor to be able to, be able to do all this stuff. Like you said, I'm on the incident management team and a number of other, uh, committees throughout the state. And, uh, what people always forget is public works is, they are a first responder. Uh, we're there for the mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery, we're there the whole time. And a lot of people forget about that, that we're always the guys in the background. So I'd be recognized for this as a really great honor. And in fact, uh, two years ago is when we had the governor sign the statewide mutual aid agreement. And because of that, we've also been able to go around the state and talk with other communities, uh, about the statewide mutual aid agreement and how good it can work for your community, as well as we're getting some calls from around the United States. It's being used in, you know, in other states right now. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, APD, APWA for letting Jim come down here and present me with this. Uh, it's great. We are on the emergency management committee together, and we've worked on it for a number of years together. And, um, um, the only else I could say is I just, I wanna thank everyone for letting me do what I do. I've been in emergency management since I started with the city, actually just a little bit before. Um, I love getting trained on this stuff and getting us prepared. And it wouldn't be for the cooperations with everybody here, police, fire, and all the other departments, 'cause we're all trained in emergency management now, I think Boyd now is a lot better prepared for disasters. So it's fun, thank you.
Resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow a residential care apartment complex in a C1 office district for the property located at 2157 Schuster Drive. The plan commission recommended approval four to zero.
Perrinato of Paracare Inc. is applicant in this case. Um, what they are proposing is the assisted living community proposed building includes a 24-unit community-based residential facility wing and administration and commons area, a 48-unit residential care apartment complex wing. Um, the community-based residential facility is committed by right in the C1 district, while the residential care apartment complex is conditional use in the C1 district, which is why it's on your agenda tonight. The property is about four and a half acres in area, and it currently includes a single-family dwelling. And according to the applicant, once the owner of that house moves into the residential care apartment complex, that house will be demolished. Um, that facility cannot be constructed on the same zoning lot, so will require a two-lot certified survey map, one for the assisted living facility and one for the house. Um, if approved, they will need to submit detailed site and architectural plans for staff review and approval. This was reviewed by the plan commission on June 6th. They held a public hearing. Um, a few neighborhood, neighboring property owners, um, came to the meeting and as a result, and talked, raised their concerns, and as a result, a fifth condition was added, which is included in your resolution as condition number five. But they did vote unanimously four to zero to recommend approval of the conditional use subject to the five conditions which are listed on the resolution, which is that the conditional use permit authorizes a two-story residential care apartment complex up to 48 units and 26,126 square feet of floor area as part of the cherry tree assisted living, living community. Prior to issuance of building permits, the applicant shall commission a two-lot certified survey map to create one lot for the house and one lot that is assisted living facility. Prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit detailed site and architectural plans for planning staff review and approval. Um, the standard one about major conditions coming back through this public process. And then the driveway on Schuster Drive shall be secured by a locked gate approved by the fire chief and shall only be used for emergency ingress and egress. Essentially, the concern of the residents that where that people would cut through and use it as a cut through and there'd be too much traffic. Um, and we had already discussed that with the applicant during pre-meetings, and so they were agreeable to it. And they are here this evening, so they are, will, will be available for questions during the public hearing. A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow a drive-in use in C3 Community Commercial District and to allow an automatic car wash bay to face and open toward Milwaukee Road in an MRO Milwaukee Road overlay district for the property located at 2748 Milwaukee Road. Doing business as sponge spa car wash. Plan commission recommended approval four to zero. Um, there is an existing 2,580 square foot building on this property that is currently used as an automated two-bay car wash. The plan is to demolish the existing building and then construct a new 2,930 square foot building to accommodate a one-bay automatic car wash. They're also intending to redesign the parking lot, the landscaping. Um, drive-in uses are a conditional use, and then the conditional use is also for large work area doors or open bays um, facing Milwaukee Road. Um, and you may recall, this has come before you in the past. There aren't major changes from that application. They've done, um, a little moving around of parking spaces and some landscaping. The new building will require site plan and architectural plan, so it will comply completely with the landscape ordinance. Um, they are proposing to use open cedar-colored bricks with limestone sillband on the upper and lower portions of the proposed building. Um, they're removing two landscape islands, um, but they'll have to establish enough landscaping to meet code. They do have the required stacking spaces, um, and they will need to, um, they will be installing one accessible parking stall and aisle on the property. The plan commission did hold a public hearing and review this on June 6th and voted four to four oh to recommend approval subject to the seven conditions listed in the resolution, which are that the conditional use permit authorizes the drive-in use in the C3 Community Commercial District and allows an automatic car wash bay to face and open toward Milwaukee Road in Milwaukee Road overlay district for the property located at 2748 Milwaukee Road. That the applicant shall obtain a demolition permit from planning and building services prior to demolishing the existing building. That the applicant shall apply for site plan and architectural review prior to the start of construction. They shall obtain architectural review certificate and sign permit prior to the establishment or replacement of outer signage for the property. The applicant shall establish one accessible parking space for the redesigned off-street parking lot. This accessible parking space shall be non-accessible and have an eight-foot wide access aisle abutting in the designated parking space that is striped with epoxy paint that is blue in color and shall be designated with ADA parking signs. And that all proposed parking stalls for the redesigned off-street parking lot shall be striped with epoxy paint that is white in color and maintained during the applicant's tenure. And then our standard condition that any major changes come back through this public process and that minor changes can be approved administratively by staff. And plan commission did recommend approval yes. Um, in 2010, Snack City Bending submitted an application for site plan review to add a 565 square foot addition to the north side of the existing 2,400 square foot building. He also proposed to establish a new off-street parking lot. Um, and he intends at this point, he's approved for that, but at this point, he intends to amend the site plan and move some of the parking stalls from the east side of the property to the north side of the property. And he is, uh, is seeking relief from the open green space requirement in order to pave the entire section. Um, the open green space requirement states that property owners should provide at least five feet of grass or living ground to cover along interior side and rear property lines. And that he is seeking an exception to this requirement along the interior property line. Um, in the staff report, we talked about, I noticed the violation where the applicant had not complied with the landscaping standards the two days before the plan commission meeting on June 6th. He did satisfy that, just so you're aware of that. When the plan commission did review this item, they held a public hearing and then voted three to one to deny the exception. Um, the resolution included in your packet, um, is in the affirmative authorizing the exception. The two conditions in there were put in there by staff, so they weren't reviewed by the plan commission. Um, essentially, plan commission felt that a hardship had not been met, and so they denied the exception.
That's all right. Um, there's something, if I could ask you, there was like a lot of, like, from, from his perspective, there was concern that if this, um, priorities and decisions that really not sufficient, um, that would go to, to, to many issues and, um, and in sight, so, um, to the purpose, um, can you talk about it, tell them, um, in terms of, um, how it's going to be?
Um, essentially, if you look at the site plan, which he, um, included in his application, um, he has room to put an addition that he wanted to put on the back, plus the parking. Um, and then there's a drive aisle, which would probably not be 24, but be 22, and then he could still have five foot of green space. He was under the impression that his property line was in a different location, so, um, he didn't feel he could meet that green space requirement. Um, but he, he thought he was at the southern, which is, um, you know, the side that, it kind of turns that wrong direction. But he did, he thought he was 15 feet from the southern property line, but he's actually 20. So he can actually move his addition over further south by feet and still make everything fit. So he had measured from 15 feet from his building across, and, um, he didn't realize where his building was situated on his lot. So he can fit the eight parking stalls he wants, plus the 22-foot drive aisle and five feet of green space. And 22-foot drive aisle is plenty of room to maneuver his vehicles.
And in my, um, part of the, part of the, part of the position, it sounded like some of the additions he was moving over, um, with African references, in terms of trying to build a state, such a lineup, is it possible?
Um, he seemed to be okay with that, not lining up exactly. I didn't talk to him. Um, one of the councilors heard that with me, so I, I mean, I'm going off what the council, who talked to the applicant.
Usually I have, have any favor of these states, um, besides if it reads site and green space ever requested it's virtually, um, not viewable from the street, it's a relative proximity. So I guess that, that still struggling was raised in terms of, um, expecting green space when it's good. Is that hardship to be positioned in the context of, with our, with our?
Well, I mean, we didn't feel, staff didn't feel, and plan commission didn't feel that he had demonstrated the hardship. Um, we have a requirement in the code that green space along the interior side and the rear side, it doesn't require there to be residences there for that green space to be there. It's required to be there on the interior side and the rear, and there's a landscape strip in front of parking lots, and all those requirements are there. And we don't determine whether it's, I mean, there's nothing in the code that says if it's next to residential. It's required to be there. There are four standards that have to be met in order to, in order to issue an exception. And I don't believe that he meets those standards. And, I mean, so from our perspective, in order to give even enforcement of the code, those standards have to be met. And past exceptions have met those standards. And, you know, the point of having that green space requirement is that there'd be five feet on each side of the property line. And where you, we require Tom Brover to put five feet. If we don't require him, we don't have that 10-foot strip, which is what you're trying to get is the 10 feet. Um, it's just required to be living ground cover. It's not required to be trees or anything that will interfere with traffic movements. These aren't big, long vans. I mean, they're, they come here and they park in front of our building. They're a standard van size, and, um, that manu- that is maneuverable, um, with the 22 feet. I'll talk to the planners and they can hear that there is room for it. Um, I mean, I know it came up. I know it came, yes, they were, I guess, they say the same, what do you do? Um, they were aware there was green space there. I don't believe they specifically discussed it. Um, but if the green space requirement isn't reasonable, it should be, the code should be amended. You shouldn't just grant it just as Snack City, which is what you're doing with this. So if you don't think it's appropriate to have interior green space to leave a lot in front, we should modify the code, not grant an exception. I mean, 'cause then you're asking for a broader, that you don't agree with the green space requirement. He does, he needs to meet these standards if he doesn't. I mean, unless you can find a way that you feel he makes the standards. Yeah, if the council feels he has a hardship, they can, they should defer the exception.
I've been talking with Mr. Rubin yesterday. I think he feels a lot better about this because he now feels he has extra room in the back, if I'm right, which is, I think.
Well, I didn't talk to him, so I know that, that I know that Mr. Kincaid talked to him, he did.
Right, he's learned that he has more, uh, land in the back to make these, uh, improvements. And he can come before the council on a future time if there still is an inconvenience or this is not working out. And then, then maybe he has to, at this time, for my conversation, I know he's, he's satisfied with what he said.
Uh, just, uh, I just wanna jump in here as, as a person who, um, whenever exceptions come before the body for this architecture, I'm the one that's saying, why are we doing this? You know, we have ordinances in place that I think we should, um, follow. And I understand the hardship. I'm comfortable with staff saying that he does not mean hardship. Then I think we need to go with that, because I think if we start taking exceptions for cases that staff feels are not hardship, we're gonna open up a whole can of worms that people can come by and say, we did it for one person, we needed to be. And I agree with our Mr. Christians, and that we need to do a way with this, and that part of the ordinance is, 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 because we won't be following it forward. I think that, uh, you know, we, we give this information, staff is added, and they break forth their recognition. Yeah, we can change it, but I caution us of moving forward and changing this, especially if staff is concerned that they're not meeting hardship, then I think we'll be opening up a can of worms for anybody who wants to come forward and, and do this, and, and we don't have to like, say.
Uh, I was just wondering if the clerk could clarify when we get to the vote on this, uh, as leaving a, no vote on this motion is required to hold the plan commission ruling. Is that correct?
Correct. The motion was in, um, in the affirmative, so the motion on the table right now is one to prove the resolution granting the exception. So a yes vote is approving the exception and a no vote is, um, approving the plan commission's recommendation.
Thank you.
I think pulling out one of the reasons for having space requirements is, um, you have to discover new spaces of, of pavement. And if you do get a charge, you have to work that, or else you go back to, sometimes with neighbors, you have to go back to. A ten space, a hundred space is just the minimum amount of floor that's very often happening, uh, hundreds of them. I think that we're wise to, to keep that in order. I'm not so bad, you know, I have, uh, do you have any other question?
Could I just ask, yeah, we started with Kate, um, this earlier, I think, because...